Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Thank you, Mr. Estes. Um, do we wanna...
Yeah. Uh, before we begin tonight, would just make sure that everyone knows that we're still taking, uh, the board is still taking these, uh, under advisement. Uh, on these maps, and you correct me if I'm wrong, um, Mr. Morgan, with the exception of, uh, the one that says nine and ten, ninth and 10th grade, everyone else is ninth through 12 unless the board chooses to grandfather.
Absolutely.
Okay. Take it away.
Okay. So, uh, just really quick, we're gonna go over, um, mainly for the public's iteration, we're gonna go over the plans that we've discussed so far, and then I'll come back to something that we've added based on some, um, requests from the public and, and also from the board.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, we're gonna look at, uh, five different options tonight. For the most part, there, there's some... There are some things that are gonna look very similar from one plan to the next, so if you have a question, please stop me at any time. So, option two E, um, is gonna take, oh, well, and let me back up real fast, too. Each of these little areas that you see in red are the areas that we're, we're discussing. Uh, we haven't, um, gone outside and, and cherry picked any, anything in particular. These are literally the areas that we have, um, been studying for some time, and now we're coming back to. So, uh, area two and three, which is located along, uh, for the main part Shelby Highway or 231, um, two and three, uh, in this plan would take all students from those two areas. There are 244 approximately, we would move those from Rockvale into, um, Riverdale, and there is an area that sits along Franklin Road and, um, Rucker, basically, and both sides of that road has the subdivisions that are in, um, make up about 213 students, and we would propose moving a two and three from, again, from Rockvale to Riverdale, and section 15 from, um, from Rockvale to Blackman. One thing that we noticed and tried to do as much as we could was to, uh, join up the, or match the middle school and the high school lines at this area. For the most part, we were able to do that, um, in this section. That would bring, and you can, uh, kind of ignore Segal from this particular mix because they do not have anything to do with this particular one. We're not moving anything for Segal. Uh, they just happened to get added as, uh, part of the overall plan. So, Blackman would end up at 2251, um, Rockvale would end up at 2248, Riverdale at 2151. So, that is that particular plan. Then, we're actually gonna go to sheet three, which is option two F. Again, the things that we just covered for areas 15, two, and three are still in play the exact same way they were in the last plan. Um, we did do some things in this plan to try to, um, alleviate some things like drive time and, you know, different logistical, uh, things in the downtown area. So, we kind of started carving that up just a little bit to see if we placed them in different areas where, where they would end up settling. Uh, one thing to draw your attention to, uh, area nine has no students in it. It's literally just a shift to make things look, uh, contiguous or, or together. And section eight, um, i- if you look at the map real quick, down at the corner where it says the word Lidle, so Lidle Street down there, there is one student in that zone. So, just make sure that we understand that section eight, again, would be another thing that we're kinda cleaning up to make it all look the, you know, like it, it's supposed to and not jagged like a jigsaw puzzle. Uh, so in this particular plan, we would, uh, be looking at Blackman being 20, 2192, Rockvale at 2193, Riverdale at 2151, and Segal being at 1962. Any questions so far?
I have one question. Looking at proposed, I, I thought we weren't, on, on this one here, we are moving some to Segal, correct?
We would be moving...
Moving the, what, A7, A8?
Yes, they would be moving to Segal, nothing would be coming out of Segal.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, A, A7...
A7, A8, um, and A6, yes, sir.
Gotcha.
All right. The next plan is, um, is G. On G, we took out the 15 and left in two and three, and made some other adjustments to, to the downtown area that are, are different than what you were looking at before. You're gonna see in just a section, um, four split into two pieces. In this particular plan, we would take all of four, um, but I wanna draw your attention to one, um, one little thing, which is where it intersects with New Salem Highway, on the north side of that four zone, again, there are no students currently living in there that meet these criteria. And also, um, the section of... There's a section of four that's adjacent to five that, that's very loosely populated. There's only one area inside of four that holds all the students for that area. But geographically, the easiest way to pick it up because it's, a lot of it is, um, light to medium commercial, um, it was easier just to gather it as one big element and move it. So, uh, if we followed this plan, uh, Blackman would actually decrease, oh, and I'm sorry, uh, there was one other big part of this, which is, um, area 11 and 12. So, kinda to make up the difference for, um, the things that we're not taking away from the southern side of Blackman, we would replace it with, um, area 11. 12, uh, again, is another cleanup item. It's a low-lying area in a commercial zone, um, and right now, it's a cemetery and, um, a marshy area that's adjacent to the floodway. In area 11, that would be the biggest part of that, uh, and that would be 358 students. So, you're gonna see that 358 played out in a big way when we look at the total numbers for, um, for this plan if we were to use it. So, uh, for that 358 that you're spending, you're getting, um, an 1857 as a complete number at the end. 2206 for Segal High School, that brings that number up pretty significantly. For Rockvale High School, uh, you take that down from, uh, to 2284, and again, at Riverdale, because we're really not doing anything other than what we did, did for the last two plans, we end up at 2151 again. A little bit more movement there, does anybody have a question? Okay. So, let's go to H. All right, this is where, where we really start kinda thinking a little bit more outside the box. In H, we would only be, for anything that we're talking about, we'd only be moving the ninth and 10th grade. And this particular plan would only affect two schools, Rockvale and Riverdale, and we're talking about an area that, once it's established, if this were the plan that were chosen, area one, two, and three are the only things that are basically holding the middle school line, um, away from being a complete zone change between the middle and the high school lines. So, Midland is basically the line right now, uh, this line that you see right here for middle school. We would literally take all three of those areas and add it to the high school, so there would definitely be a clear path for anyone living in those th- three areas from middle school to high. Does that make sense? Okay. Any questions on that one?
Oh, excuse me, on this, it, it would impact the ninth and 10th?
Yes, sir.
And that would be for each, I, I mean, the next year be the...
Yeah, so basically what we would be proposing, thank you, Mr. Spurlock, with that would be is ninth and 10th this coming year, and then each preceding year, you would add the next grade level on. So, it would be a phased-in approach, basically how the board decided to do, um, Segal Middle, uh, two years ago, when we did a little bit of rezoning there. So, next year, all of the ninth and all of the 10th would be required to go, and then the 11th and 12th, those students that live in one of those three areas would then have to make up their mind, do I want to continue where I'm at and provide my own transportation to and from campus, or do I wanna go to where I'm zoned for and receive transportation that way?
So, what you're talking about is, you're talking about ninth and 10th going, being rezoned there, and if you choose the 11th and 12th, the, the board would have to grandfather?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Which means that they would have to provide their own transportation?
That's, that's correct. Any questions on that one?
What is just the rising ninth graders in this, do you have the ninth graders only, not 10th and 9th?
So, for just those three areas?
Mm-hmm.
I think you had those earlier in the, on one map you had, did you not?
So, it's a, a 108, 108 fr- uh, rising freshmen live in those three areas altogether.
Yeah, that's a good question.
123. And that is for areas one, two, and three.
And that's the only map that just impacts, excuse me, two schools, right?
Uh, yes, sir, that's correct. Yes, ma'am. Area one?
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna take a guess.
Okay.
Remember for sure. I mean, I've been here for 15 years, and we've done this a couple of times, but, and I have looked at it, but if I remember right, one may have been moved twice. This would be the second move since I've been here.
Where was it moved to?
Well, it was, it was...
I mean, Riverdale's...
It may have only been the once.
I think Riverdale's on the wall.
I think it's only been once. I think it has not been moved until they moved it three days ago.
Yeah. It was moved once for this, for Rockvale.
Rockvale.
Um, previous to that, it was either the line or next to the line for the dual zone that was, uh, between Riverdale and Eagleville, which is the core of what made up Rockvale.
Some of it was, I think you're right.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I wanna interject here, 'cause I live in area one, and in the last 15 years, whether it's high school, middle school, or elementary school, this area has been rezoned at least six, seven, or eight times.
Now, that particular, I, I assume you just meant high school, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, rezoned altogether.
For other, for other grade bands, it definitely has been...
Oh, it's been moved a lot?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But this is the traditional Christiana zone that was there, that, that was there three, four years ago?
Yes, yeah. It would have matched what was there previous to Rockvale.
Okay.
Okay, so I have one more thing to show you, is there any more questions on this? Okay. So, if you would please go back, actually, um, we're gonna go back to the, what was the second page tonight. So, one of the things that we were asked to look at was, um, to get a little bit more, um, of an idea what it would look like to keep Plan E but do something different with it. And one of the things that we came up with was taking just the rising ninth and 10th, um, into this same plan, but again, only using the ninth and 10th grade to see what, how the numbers would play out there.
When you say this, is this the same thing as that the board would grandfather the juniors and seniors for this upcoming year?
Yes, sir, that would be the same kind of, of plan that we would work with. So, again, these numbers are gonna be a little bit different once the actual door opens next fall, um, because what we would hope is that we would have more students that would be willing to go as juniors and seniors. So, um, to give you an idea of the difference that we're looking at here, so whereas in two A... I'm sorry, in two E for section 15, you had a total of 213 students that could possibly go that were in all four of the grades. You would end up with 120 that would move immediately. And for two and three, where you had 244 students, you'd have 141 that would move immediately. One thing that that gives you is a little bit of an idea, although we know that there's gonna be a lot of growth in these, in these areas that we're talking about. Um, one thing that you can kind of see when you look at E and E2 is how many students are left in the other two grades. So, you kinda have an idea of what you may get the next year. Um, you know, that being the 23, 24 school year and then the, so on and so forth.
But in this map here, um, some of those kids that are going to Rockvale High School still go to Christiana Middle, right? Zone one looks like it's been absolved by Rockvale.
That's right.
Eric, would you say that again? Sorry.
This is missing zone one.
Okay, the one we're looking at right now? Okay.
Or you saw on that big one. Those kids are still going to Christiana Middle, and then they're gonna turn around and go to Rockvale High School.
In zone one?
Mm-hmm. So, it's not keeping those kids together as, like two H does.
Can you tell me what the rising on, on, just the rising ninth graders, just ninth grade?
In which area?
On the two E volume two, the one we just talked about.
In, in just section one, or one, two, or three?
Totally. So, in, I'm looking at, um, option two E VO2.
Okay.
And it's ninth and 10th from 15, two, and three.
So, 15, two, and three, so you're talking about 261 students altogether.
So, how many rising ninth graders from 15? Do you have that?
Ninth graders from 15.
Or rising, so they'd be ninth grade?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Next year's ninth, the ninth graders.
There, there, from 15 is 56.
56, what about next year's sophomores?
64.
And then from two and three? Ninth graders?
58. 10th grade is 50. Ninth grade for section three is 12, and 10th grade is 21.
Thank you. And we get, um, the, um, these, all the schools included, Blackman, Rockvale, Riverdale, and I don't know if we have that information available tonight, but what their capacity is and what their current occupancy is, please.
So, I'm gonna lea- uh, read the capacities out first, and these are capacities that are...
Did you get to, let me interrupt real quick?
Yes, sir.
Have you received the latest enrollment numbers?
I have.
Staffing? The staffing report?
No, sir, I haven't.
Okay. Probably need to get that first.
Okay.
We got a January 4th staffing report today.
That come from, uh, Dr. Sullivan?
Yeah, we can get it to you.
So, the numbers that you have are too outdated, when would your numbers?
Well, I mean, they're, they're not that much off, but there's some small variances.
Okay.
I would just go over the capacity, and then let's get the, um, staffing report tone.
Okay. So, the raw capacity for those four buildings. Blackman's gonna be 2266. Riverdale's 2068. Rockvale is 2310. And Segal is 2332.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Would you like the current enrollment or the projected enrollment for next year?
A projected would be wonderful.
Okay, so this is if we did nothing, just to make sure. Blackman would be 2038. Riverdale, 1907. Rockvale's 2705. Segal is 1848.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions to this, to this point on these items? Mr. Spurlock went to get, um, attendance numbers.
What was Segal again? I'm so sorry, I had that...
For which, ma'am, I'm sorry?
Uh, projected for next year, if we do nothing.
Uh, 1848 is what I'm looking at now.
I'm not sure if we, and I guess we can wait for Mr. Spurlock, but I, I do wanna ask for, um, all these areas, I appreciate the ninth through 12th, and I understand the issue that we're facing, but I wanna know what ninth grade only acco- in all of these zones. I understand ninth and 10th, but I wanna look at just ninth grade in 15, 1, 2, 3, 6, 7, 8, 9, which has nothing. I guess that would be two Fs map, do you...
Is this one that we, the one that we looked at last week?
Potentially, I don't know if we've ever looked at this map, actually, and you've already given us 15, 2, and 3, I don't know if you've given us one rising ninth graders only, did you already do that? Yes.
I may not have given it to you recently.
Okay.
So, if we were to just do rising freshmen?
Yes.
We would end up, um, taking about 70 from two and three, and 56 from section 15.
And then what about, uh, 6, 7, 8, and 9, those areas?
If we were to do a plan that encompassed all the...
Yep. Just ninth graders.
I, I would have to work that up.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any numbers about any, or anything that you wanna ask me, just while we're waiting for Mr. Spurlock? Yes, sir? Currently? Um, all right, I really, I don't know, I'd have to look.
Wait for Mr. Spurlock to come back with those numbers.
On this one that's got, uh, sections one, two, and three, that looks like it's, affects just basically Rockvale.
Yes, ma'am.
Projections, if we move incoming ninth and 10th, is that the enrollment for Rockvale only goes from 24, 26 to 24, 74. But there could be more movement because you think that there are, if we were to grandfather, that there would be children choose to come to Riverdale.
Yes, ma'am, I mean, I, that's kind of what we...
That's not a lot of movement there with Rockvale.
No. But that's kind of typical of what we have seen in the, in the past. When you have, when you're faced with a situation where one, especially where one sibling has been moved to one school and one stays at the other school, uh, the family has to make it, you know, the best choice for them, and when that happens, sometimes w- we are able to count both of those families.
Did that happen with Blackman?
That has happened in every single rezoning I, I've ever done, unless there was something that prevented it, but for the most part, that happens in every single rezoning.
Okay.
But that is not an odd thing, James, am I right in saying that?
No, it's not odd.
So, I'm gonna say just based on the capacity and the projected numbers for next year, we can see where the other high schools that are being discussed, and then I'm interested to know what the rest of our county high schools are gonna look at, look like. We have space in those schools, and Rockvale continues to swell, so there are over 600, almost 600 students more, no, wait, excuse me, 400 students more than their capacity. I would like to know ninth graders, so is that, should I wait until Mr. Spurlock comes back, or would this be something you'd have to provide us later on?
If it was the ninth grade for all the areas that we've talked about?
Yes.
And I take it you're not talking about anything in zone 11 or 12?
No, I'm just talking about, um, 6, 7, 8, and 9. 9 has nothing, 8 has one, you said, but I don't know if that's a ninth grader or not.
So, if, if we would, were to do something like that, we would, one of the things that we had pulled in before, um, if you wanna look at the map up here, we had kind of talked about pulling in this little area, this little subdivision here along Franklin Road, and also this, this one right here where, uh, Kingwood is, but it didn't go, like, very far. Basically, we were liter- quite literally matching up the middle school line along Franklin Road, and there were three areas where it dipped down below. So, one idea of the 50,000 that we've come up with so far was to kind of pull in that, so that would, um, that would put, uh, Blackman around just over 2,000, um, Rockvale at 2,500, and, uh, Riverdale at 2030, and Segal at about 1875.
That's just moving rising eighth graders tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
This is a staffing report from, uh, the 13th, which is, I guess it was last Thursday, correct on that? Does that sound right? Anyway, you can see, the green total is what was, uh, showed up on our staffing report, a comparison from last year on March the 21st of 21, excuse me, and the difference. So, you can see how each one grow, or grew. I think what we gotta keep in mind is the numbers sometimes change rapidly, and especially over a semester. You probably got these toward the end of the last semester?
Uh, probably towards the middle, actually.
Okay. So, there can be a, there can be a shift during that time, but these are actual numbers came, that came off the staffing report.
Thank you.
As far as approved subdivisions for these areas. I know Rockvale's still building, and Blackman's still building, well, Christiana's still building. Do we know what the projected numbers are on new homes?
To try to project one, you know, an area in general is a little bit too hard in Rutherford County. If you were to give me specifics about where you would want to look, I can get a little bit closer. And that would be something that I would have to give you later. It's not something you can come up on the fly. But I will say, I do get every week the inventory reports from Murfreesboro City and from Rutherford County. And when we look at this particular area, right now, there are a little over 800 homes that are available for inventory, but only about half of those are actually ready to move. So, they've been sitting there a while.
I'm just curious, the ones that are in, that are in inventory, where are they sitting at? Are they sitting in Rockvale Zone, or are they sitting in Christiana?
And that is, as Mr. Spurlock said, it's, that's an over-changing item.
Really, the inventory overall is down.
Yes, it is.
They can't finish out the homes. That's the reason why the prices of their homes are going up so high. It's taken them a lot longer now because of the supply chain.
And some of the builders, this is an interesting note, some of the builders, I found out, finished out some of those homes because they had an inventory of stuff that went in the house. I have an extra slab of granite I got to put somewhere. They put it in a house, it automatically jacked the price up a little bit. And they've been doing that just to decrease the things that they have on hand because they don't want to hold on to that stuff.
If, if we weren't dealing with the supply chain and the inventory, these numbers could actually look worse than we are sitting at today. If they could finish homes quicker.
That's correct. In fact, down on the northern end of the county especially.
Okay. Should we hear from our parents and then discuss as a board? Would the board be okay with that?
Great.
So, thank you, Mr. Morgan. We'll probably have more questions, but I appreciate you so far. So, if there's parents that, or students, we love to hear from our students, anyone would like to address us, we'd like to hear from you. So, feel free to step to the mic and share your position with us.
Hello. Thank you all for meeting today. I live at 2922 Lightning Buck Drive. And I'm going to read the email I sent out earlier. "I wrote you before, about five years ago, when rezoning was about to happen with my oldest son. He was moved from Stewart's Creek High for two years, and then back to Blackman. He graduated cum laude from Blackman. Thank you, Lord. But Stewart's Creek wasn't the best choice for us. We went through a lot of trials there, and I truly believe they could have been avoided if he had stayed at Blackman Middle and then Blackman High. We live five minutes from Blackman and the Vessel Down subdivision off of Honeybee and Lightning Buck Drive. I cannot believe we are being considered for being zoned to Segal. I don't even go on that side of town, to be honest with you." I mean, that's just ridiculous. It's not fair to the children. And, I mean, it's not, it's not fair to them. They have not been in the Segal Middle School or the Segal Elementary Zone. It's just not fair. So, I don't see why 2G is being proposed. It is the only plan that's going to increase every school, if I'm correct. Every other high school would increase, except for Blackman. And if the goal is to decrease Rockvale, I don't see why that's even on the table. So, thank you for considering that.
Thank you.
And I'm also an educator in Rutherford County, so 17 years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Hunter Pittman. I'm a sophomore at Rockville High School, and I live in Zone 15. I'm a member of the Rockville Band, and I'm also enrolled in the AP Capstone Program. I reached out to you earlier through email about my situation and the importance of the AP Capstone Program. However, I failed to mention that I've already begun working towards the AP Capstone Diploma, which is not available at Blackman High School. If I am to be rezoned at Blackman High School, I will lose out on not just the opportunity of the AP Capstone Program, but also the distinguished diploma associated with said program. I'm asking that you give, that you make the same consideration for students in AP Capstone as you did for students in BCA. When rezoning took place three years ago, BCA students were allowed to remain at Blackman. Students in the AP Capstone Program should be allowed to have the same opportunity to remain with our program. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm hopeful that I can remain a Rockville student. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is William Mitchell, and I am a parent of a student who attends Blackman High School. My concern this evening is rather, maybe I'm exasperated because of the time that it appears to be taking to make these decisions in regard to redistricting. I would assume, having worked in the public realm before, that staff has a preferred recommendation regarding these various plans. And I would assume that a decision would become, I guess, relatively soon that would allow households to make the necessary, or families to make the necessary changes if they need to relocate or so forth. I myself am willing to relocate again. I relocated to Rutherford County for my child to attend Blackman High School. That is, when I did my research, everything seemed to point to that particular school. So, again, I just would hope that this body would come to a decision. Again, this is putting households, families, as well as the students, most of all, on hold in terms of what their future plans would be as of matriculating through the Rutherford County school system. Again, I do believe that there is a preferred concept, and I believe that there is a preferred recommendation or recommendations. And it would be, just be very helpful if that is shared with the community as quickly as possible, such that those can make the necessary accommodations. Thank you.
I appreciate that, sir. I will tell you that there isn't, but I would totally agree with you 100% that we do need to make a decision soon. Because we do have a lot of parents that are waiting, and quite frankly, a lot of students, and we need to make those decisions. You're correct in that.
Thank you.
My name is Cindy D'Anio. I talked to Claire Maxwell yesterday on the phone. I sent an email as well. I've never really had a reason to even come speak at a board meeting because I always trusted that everything was going well and the decisions being made were, you know, in the best interest of students. Until this zone proposal. Sorry, I just get so emotional because our kids' futures are at stake, and you feel really helpless because you have a kid that is vested at Blackman. And, like, he's excited about going to high school. And you have a kid that has trouble making friends, and feeling included. But then you're going to strip all that away and send him to somewhere he's never met anybody on the other side of town if that Segal is nine miles from our house. I just don't understand, you know? I would challenge each of you to go drive from Burleson Lane to Segal in the mornings and the afternoons. See how long it takes. Some days, you might wait 20 minutes for the train to be. I mean, that's going to impact your kids being on time. We have, we have three kids, you know, they all do extracurricular stuff. I'm sure everybody encourages their kids to be successful. Pick something to be active. I have one in elementary school at Stewart'sboro. I would have one at Blackman Middle. And if the proposal for Segal is what gets carried out, there would be no way that I could successfully pick them up. So, my ask is really spend some time driving the routes the bus would take. Think about your kids, your grandkids. See if that's what you would be happy for them doing. I understand overcrowding's a problem. They're building 200 houses close to us. I get it. I mean, it's just really a bad day, like you all said, to a bigger problem. It's a temporary fix for a big problem. You know, I love growth in the community more than anything, but our kids are the ones that are getting the fall for all of this. Thank you for your time.
Are you in Zone 11?
11.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, hello. My name is Ham Strong, and I spoke on the, as I spoke upon the last two, last two gatherings that we had done. My thing is, I sit there and I listen to the numbers that he's portraying and everything. I understand that. The numbers are small, and I know that there's going to be a change. And it's like, as I spoke on the last one, it's like, my daughter's at a crossroad right now. She's at a crossroad. She's excelling even when she had to stay at home and do her work on her computer. She still excelled. She still excelled without being in a classroom setting. She's on a cheerleading team. They're doing, and she's really excited about what she's doing. And the classes that she's taking is like, and she tells me, she said, Daddy, I want to be a paralegic. Now, you're stepping out of the box. You're stepping so far beyond where I'm thinking right now. This is what you want to do, not what us as parents want to do. I understand that. But to see her excel from social distancing to going back into the classroom and excited where she's at, she's a freshman. Well, she's a freshman now. She's going to be a 10th grader. And as my guy, your guy, has spoken, he was like, the numbers, the numbers, they're close. They're very close. But I see her excelling in the Rockvale area, that she's wanting to do this. But to put her in a situation that she don't, that she don't want to do, and if not this year, what, next year? The year, the year after? What? She got three years to do what she want to do, and she's excelling right now. She's excelling to a level that I'm very proud of what she's doing. And I don't have to push her to do it. She want to do it. But if you put her in an environment that she's not comfortable with, she's made friends. The friends on her cheerleading team, she's made at Rockvale, and she's liking her teachers and everything, you're going to put her right back in a freshman at a sophomore level. At a freshman, at a sophomore, I got to learn my teachers. I got to learn up my friends. I got to make new friends. I just don't want her to take a step backwards. She's at a crossroad right now. She's right here now. I can either go left or right. I see her going right. I see her going right. And I will push her to every other level that, that was the only person, that was the only purpose of us purchasing a home in the Rockvale area because I knew she would excel. She would excel, not taking anything from Riverdale. Riverdale and Oakland, they've been there for many years. Matter of fact, I went to Riverdale. My kid, my other kids went to Riverdale, which was a blessing. But she's excelling at a level that is mind-boggling to me because she want to do it. I'm not making her do it. I'm not pressing her, "Go get your work. Do this, do that." She's excelling. She showed me when it was social distancing, and she maintained an A and an AB student without a teacher. Without a teacher. That told me, that shows me that she want to do what she wants to do. And I'm so proud of what she's doing. But for you all to put her in this zoning section right now, to put her in this zoning section that she can go either way. I really don't want her to go the opposite way. The world is, the sky's the limit for you, and she's showing me she's, she can excel in that area because that's something that she wants to do. That is something that she wants to do. I appreciate you all and for what you are trying to, the decision that you all have to make. You all have to make a decision. I understand that. But please don't do it at the exile of my child. My child, I want her to exceed and excel beyond where, and as the area is growing. I'm in the concrete business, and she told me, she told me this, and she don't really understand what she was saying to me, but she was saying, I'm in the concrete business. We did houses in Franklin and Brentwood and all of that. And it's people moving in here from Atlanta, I mean, Ohio, Dayton, Ohio, Florida, Cincinnati, other areas that never even seen this area. The housing market is a bid war right now. They have not even seen this area. They buying up houses with four, five different kids. You find a house, you got five children here, you buy a house, you have never even seen this area. You've never seen this area, but you're going to bring five more kids in it. There your numbers are. That's where your numbers are. Because they're bringing kids in here that never seen this area. And what we are doing here, what we've accomplished at this point in time, they're coming into Rutherford County, Nashville, Nashville, Franklin, Brentwood, Mount Juliet. They're coming with kids. And never even seen, never even, they haven't even seen the house that they're trying to buy. It's a bid war. They bidding on it. They got enough money. They buy their house. I don't care what the other area you got to deal with. I'm going to deal with this. I'm bringing kids here. And that's what my, and as my daughter spoke on the last meeting that we did, she said, it's not their fault. It's not their fault that people are coming into this area, buying houses, overpopulating. And as we're doing this now with the zoning and everything, it's overpopulating areas that they've never even seen. But my daughter has made an impact where she's at. Where she's at, and she's starting to excel and going to, looking into the collegiate level. Three years in the collegiate level, and she can go from that point to there and then live her life how she needs to live it. But you're hindering her, and you're putting her in a box where she, she has to go to a place that you all want to send her to. You're rezoning it. You are rezoning it. Her heart is, her heart is at Rockvale right now. She, her heart is there, and she's living it, and she's trying to excel. She's showing me that she excelling without my supervision, without any teacher's supervision when she was social distancing. Because she has a drive, and she's trying to pursue what she want. She said, Daddy, I want to be a paralegic. She said, I want to be a paralegic. I want to help people. Rockvale provides that. Rockvale provides that. Riverdale doesn't. I cannot, I can't hinder you because that's what she wants to do, and that's where she can excel at. Riverdale does not provide- Riverdale does not provide that area. But I hate to tell her, baby, you gotta, you gotta do what the boy gonna say. I know you all have a choice to make, and however you want to do it, but as, as we said, the numbers that he portrayed, they're not dramatic. It's a few numbers here and there. But thank you, I appreciate you all, and that decision is you all. God bless, I talk to you.
What, what zone are you in?
Yes, I was gonna ask that too.
What zone are you in? What zone that you're talking about?
Zone three.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Hi, my name is Samantha Dixon. I actually spoke at the last meeting in December. We live in Area 11, right off of Florence Road. We've been there for fifteen years. I actually was born and raised in Murfreesboro, went to Smyrna High School, I've always been in Rutherford County schools. When I moved to that area, I was asked why am I leaving Smyrna, since that was my home school. I love the Blackman area. The schools, the teachers, just everything about the school system at Blackman is amazing. Kenneth is in eighth grade at Blackman Middle. He is going to be going into ninth grade in August. He's in the Blackman Band, has been there all three years in middle school, and he's already been accepted to the Blackman High School Band for next year. If we are rezoned to Segal, that's gonna eliminate that chance, because he's already built those fellowships and the relationships with those teachers at Blackman High School. Every day, he's stressing going to school, because he doesn't know what next year faces. They're already having people come from Blackman High School to speak to the incoming freshmen about planning classes, talking about the collegiate program that Blackman High School actually has that other schools in the county does not. He doesn't even know if he should go to those meetings, because he doesn't know if he's even gonna be at Blackman next year. Just like another parent talked about, the driving to Segal, forty-five minutes in the morning. That's if the train isn't stopped on both sides of the railroad track. If you live on that side of town and you have to go to Smyrna or go to Murfreesboro Road, and it's early in the morning, or even late in the afternoon, you're stuck behind that train for a good thirty-five to forty minutes. I used to work off of Stinger Road, I know how that traffic is. I don't even like driving down Thompson Lane to go to Segal. I'm not gonna let my kid, who's fixing to be fifteen in September, who's gonna start getting his learner's permit and driving, to drive down that road. And when he gets a job and he does happen to go to Segal, how's he gonna make it to work at five or five-thirty, when his bus isn't even gonna be home until about four, forty-five, five o'clock on a good day? We have to stop looking at these kids as numbers. If you want to build them, where you're focusing on elementary, middle school, and high school, and having them grow up together, this is not the way to do it. I understand, as someone who was born and raised here, Rutherford County is the number-one county in the whole entire state that is booming. You have Nissan, who has been here since the eighties. It has overpopulated this area, and I get it. But you have to stop thinking of these kids as numbers and trying to play this whole Lego game of moving them around. Think about their futures. Every parent in here has a kid who's established something at these schools. But moving someone who lives three miles away from a school and having them relocate to another school that's twelve miles away, what sense does that make? Like I said in the meeting in December, if a family lives within five miles of a school, they should not be allowed to be rezoned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Hello, my name is Chandra Harrison, I live at 4358 Scottish Drive. We are zone fifteen. I have three children, one of whom went to Blackman High School and was rezoned a couple of years ago to Rockvale. Blackman was, was not a great fit for him, and so he was happy to rezone. He was a senior, and it was a very good year, other than half of it quickly ending. I now have a daughter, who is a freshman at Rockvale, who wanted to stay at Blackman and couldn't believe that she had to go from where we lived, nine miles or however far it is, to Rockvale. That being said, she has developed a great group of friends, she loves her teacher, she is very happy at Rockvale. I also have a son who is at Blackman Middle. He, I don't know which school he wants to go to, but obviously has developed friends and is building all of that. I guess what I would like to say is that I thought, Ms. Johnson, your comments about the rising ninth graders and what those numbers were, I'm sorry, this is completely against what you were just saying, and I apologize. But if kids are already established in a school, I think that you really need to take that into account. And that if you're rezoning, I understand, people have to be rezoned. But if kids are already at a school, attending that school, they should not have to change. And I think if they have already, as this woman said, if they have already established some kind of program in the school, or in whichever group it is, band or is it Becca? I know that there are zone exemptions, and I know that it's really a challenge for all of you to deal with those. But I think when you are rezoning, you need to take those into consideration, and really think about kids that have already moved once, and now you're gonna ask them to move again. So I think that's it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to just share with us your position? Okay, if you didn't get an opportunity to speak to us, but you'd like to speak to a board member or after, feel free to talk to us, we'll be available. And now we'll go back to board members and I guess discuss where we're gonna go from here. Does...
I think it would behoove us to get rid of some that we, you don't want. I mean, and, and guys, I, I want to just speak to the parents too. First of all, it's not easy making these decisions as board members. I'm not a board member, I don't make this decision. We, we create those, and, and let me tell you where we are as a county, okay? We have tremendous growth. It's not as easy as just all, all the Blackman Middle kids and Blackman High School kids are gonna go to school together. It doesn't work that way. You got a huge comprehensive high school that, that we completely, like twenty-two-hundred in, built the capacity. Well, they have feeder schools and middle schools, they'll have maybe three, four. I think Blackman, you may have, what, six? You have, you have seven, okay? So it's not easy. It's not, I mean, it's not. And, and quite frankly, we can't control growth here, and, and not even our county commissioners can. If those developers come to, uh, come to the county and want to build and they have everything in line, legally, we can't stop them. You know, I always say, the good thing about being in Rutherford County is everybody wants to come here, and that's the bad thing about Rutherford County. Everyone wants to come here. One of the gentlemen talked about a lot of growth. Uh, you know, I can go back, and some of you can too, that's been in our county, when we, when our population was somewhere around eighty thousand throughout the county. It would be, we, we know that we have transplants, and, and there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, we embrace that. But, and, and quite frankly, building schools. Currently, you, you know, where, where we used to pay forty-two thousand for an acre of land, you know, forty-two thousand an acre, you can't touch it for less than eighty thousand an acre now. Now, I don't know if you guys understand this, but I will, I will help you out a little bit. When we go to buy land, we have to borrow, the, the county government has to borrow money to purchase the land. When we build, the county has to go out and, and go to bond market and, and, and purchase, get the funding for us to build a school. Currently, when we look at our debt service as a county, you know, when we look at our debt services as a county, we are, it's growing. You know, and, and quite frankly, the only way that you can make that happen is to raise taxes, property taxes. No one likes to do that, you know, but we all live in a great community, I think we get a lot of bang for our buck. But unfortunately, we, you know, this is not gonna stop. I mean, I'd like to tell you this is gonna stop. We could start building a school, a debt, I mean, a school a year for the next twenty years and probably not catch up. And I know Mr. Young said that many times. So it is, it's a challenge. So, and I, and I'm hearing you, but I would like to help you guys out, because you do, we do need answers. We do need answers. And I think we've got to cut some, I mean, we've got a really, board, I think we really have to narrow some of these down. You guys have to narrow them down, and that way we have a clear picture of what we're facing.
I agree with you about narrowing this down. My problem is I don't like any of these.
How many times have you called about any of these? I hear the look at some more. Because these, you've had these out for a while, other than that one, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I can't tell you how many times I've been contacted now.
I, I feel very strongly that we do not need to move too many children. I, I...
I agree with Ms.
I, I, I just think that when they get to high school, their lives are totally different. Now, I'm sorry, but upcoming ninth graders, they're gonna have to go wherever we zone. They're just gonna have to. I'm sorry. Well, we haven't rezoned yet. I understand. That, I understand. Well, what I'm saying is, wherever we zone ninth graders, eighth graders to ninth, they're, they're, they're gonna have to do that. I mean, we don't have any choice. But I don't know what we can look at and how we can make this better, and what we can do to balance this out. We are putting a Band-Aid on a gaping wound, and we are going to have to do something about an aggressive building plan in order to be a county that does rezoning one time and that's it, and you've got it zoned for the next four to five years. That's what needs to happen. We can't make all that happen at once. I am not against grandfathering in several of these areas and saying, you want to go to school at Rockvale? Stay at Rockvale. If you want to go to Riverdale, move to Riverdale. We cannot provide transportation for grandfathered people, but can't we find out where we would be with those numbers? Find out what our parents are thinking?
I, I don't know how you can do that. I don't know how.
Survey.
We can grandfather, but I don't know how you could determine who, I mean, we, we don't know. I mean, so we don't, some, we don't know sometimes until they show up at our doorstep.
There's got to be a way to find out.
I agree with, I agree with Mr. Spurlock. There, there is always, even the last, the first two weeks of school, we don't know where kids are coming from or where, where they're gonna go. But I do think, Ms. Johnson and I had spoke about it before, doing a poll from an email, maybe Mr. Evans could put something together. Because I know that there are some, some parents out there that because they work in this area or because they drive to a certain area, that they could very easily just go to that school versus us moving someone. And I don't know how, Mr. Evans...
Here's the way I would approach it, grandfather them.
Okay.
But you can't, I mean, keep in mind, when you grandfather them, that mean, you know, your grand, let's say you're grandfathering the rising tenth through the twelfth. That's for that year only, okay? Because the next year, if anyone's in the tenth or eleventh or whatever, they're, they're, you know, moved in, they're gonna be going to the zoned school.
You'd have to take like a stepped approach, like what we talked about.
I mean, I do think we should grandfather those.
This, just, you grandfather everybody but freshman this year, next year it's freshman, sophomore.
Right, right. I do understand, I do understand that.
Yes, and if, that's the other thing, if they, if they were to move in during that time, no matter what grade they were in, they have to go to their...
Exactly. That makes perfect sense, Mr. Morgan.
If, if I could make a suggestion, before you get into your grandfathering, narrow this down.
Agreed.
It's gotta be narrowed down.
Can I say, honestly, and I want to apologize, I wasn't on the board three years ago, and I'm so sorry that we're having to do this again. This, I, I have such ultimate empathy for all you guys. And my ultimate goal is just as Ms. Bratton said, Ms. Shilah said, is to do this and not have to do this again for many, 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 many years. And that building plan, we're going to get very aggressive, and hopefully we will get what we need, that we can do that. But I will tell you, something has to be done about Rockvale High School. It's number one, and we've got to try to do something immediately towards that. And rezoning zones one, two, and three, which is the old traditional, that's Christiana that goes to Riverdale, makes the most sense if you want to make it just ninth and tenth and grandfather everybody else, or you just want to make it ninth grade and grandfather everybody else. I believe that would work, and it would give the relief that we need at Rockvale, while gradually getting the children back, the traditional zone back, deline those kids with Riverdale. And hopefully we'll have, in a couple of years, we will have the buildings that we need to house all the numbers that are, and it's, I, that's, that's priority one with me, is making sure that we at least do something about Rockvale.
Yes, I think that's good.
I concur. Rockvale is the problem, is the issue that we're facing, it's three hundred ninety-five students over capacity going into next year if we do nothing. So we, we've got to look at that area and see what we can do to, to relieve that number. I don't know how we missed and got so out of line when we built Rockvale and I, I don't know how we got to this capacity this quick. Because when we built Rockvale, we had room at Rockvale High.
Yeah, but Mr. Young, I can go back, Blackman High School, same thing happened to them. Within two years of Blackman High School opening up, anytime you build a new school in an area that's undeveloped, guess what comes along with it? Homes. And it goes along very quickly. I can remember the first year at Blackman High School, before you even came in our system, I was a site director out there. I walked out to the farthest end of your parking lot, and there was a deer caught in a grate. Okay, so that's how far that's developed, I mean, how much that's developed out there. Guys, I don't know how, I'm gonna burst some bubbles, okay? We can't outbuild growth. One or two things happen. You either bankrupt your government, or else they won't, you know, we won't, they won't fund us. I mean, you can't outbuild it. It's unsustainable. We're gonna have to look at different ways of handling growth, and, and quite frankly, that's worse than, that's worse than rezoning. Some of you go back and look at, in California, Florida, and some of those areas in the, you know, as they develop that growth, they did what called multi-track, multi-school tracks, you know, and that's, nobody wants that. You think that's, you think rezoning's bad? That's really tough. But, you know, we, what we've got to do is we've got to try to make decisions the best we can. We do need, I mean, obviously the west end, thirty percent of our growth occurred in the northwest end of our county. That's not stopping, there's no secret to it. Our infrastructure down there is a lot better. It's, you got eight forty, you got twenty-four, you can get anywhere. And, and, and it's a, it's a good place to live. You know, what, who knows what's gonna happen in the future when utilities go out last Cass's way? I mean, I can see that just blowing completely up out there. So what we've got to do is we've got to work with our elected officials, work with our parents, and try to come up with some solutions to our growth. These are Band-Aid approaches. Nothing, I mean, quite frankly, building schools are Band-Aid approaches. We built, you opened up in two thousand, is that right? Two, twenty-one hundred?
We were about eighteen.
Eighteen hundred? So you're, so from, so through, what's this, your third year open? So you've grown that bit much and, that, that quickly. You know, that, that's, that's a classic example, and, and, you know, it's just going to continue.
One thing I think we can do is we can go ahead and, in my opinion, omit option two G.
Okay, good.
I think we can just get rid of that one, and that would... I think we can just get rid of that one, and that would probably take care of two or three parents that's out here in this audience right now.
I agree. Option 2G.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
And then.
Yeah, 11 and 12.
It's you.
And then, if we look at grandfathering, and I think it would take care of a couple of other.
Mm-hmm.
Parents out of here.
Right.
And then, we can start looking at what's left here, these maps, and see what we can.
Right. So, we're down to four, but some of them are kind of similar, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe this, option 2E, O2.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that we.
You want to get rid of that?
If, I mean, I need some other input from board members, but.
Any board member have any objections to that?
I could get rid of this one.
Yeah, I can.
Option 2E, O2.
2E, O, V2?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, that's better.
So, I do want to weigh in here. I have students in the system attending our schools, Rockvale in fact, and my children were affected by the last rezoning. In fact, I'm the only board member with children in schools, attending schools, but everybody else has some connection, or most. We rezoned my son, who was a rising 10th grader, and I will not do that again. That has been the hardest transition for an exceptional student who I can barely get to school today, and it's not a reflection of the schools. He loved Riverdale, started at Riverdale. Rockvale's a spectacular school. I have a ninth grader who loves Rockvale High, but I know the impact that it has had on our students to move them once they're established in a school. I don't want to, I will not support, cannot support moving any student that is already in their school. I only want to move rising ninth graders, and I want to offer an option for grandfathering, because there is a problem. We do have overcrowding, and we have unique, you know, Rutherford County is such a beautiful place to live, because every community is its own community, and they get attached to their schools, and they get attached to, I mean, just the uniqueness. So, I understand that wanting to stay. The downtown area, I don't know how we did this, when we moved all those students to Rockvale, so we have kids who are traveling past Riverdale to get out to the country school, as they call it. I don't know if that's something we need to be looking at, but if we do, I want to move only rising ninth graders. So, I'm with Ms. Maxwell. I am in zone one. It's a hard decision to make, but I'm not going to support anything that's going to move anybody who's already in a high school, so rising ninth graders only is what I favor, as I know the impact that it has on parents and students, particularly students. And there was a parent who spoke to us at one of our last meetings who brought up a point that I hadn't even thought about, when your students start in an athletic program or a band program, and they're on a pathway for funding for college, or, I never considered that when we first rezoned, and I apologize that I didn't, but there are different pathways that our students are pursuing, and I think as hard as this is, you know, I know we're going to go into potentially another rezoning for middle school, we're going to keep rezoning, and I think that for me, I would like to see us stop piecemealing, and I would like to see us look at a district-wide year approach. Let's look at bringing in a consultant, somebody who can help us establish some stability, because the number one thing, we fail to provide our students and our families is stability, and that's the number one thing our students need to thrive and succeed. So, that's where I'm at. Very tough decision. I know we're overcrowded. I don't necessarily like 2F, but it moves more students.
Could we do 2F and 2H? Put them together? Because I do believe we've got to put the old Christiana section back together, even if we just take the rising ninth graders, but let those parents know that live in section one, that going forward. Because that's, that's Christiana Middle.
I, my only concern is putting six back to Segal, or sending it to Segal. I don't know that that's a good idea.
What about 15? You are talking about if we move 15 back to the Blackman zone, grandfathering?
Yeah, grandfathering, only doing rising ninth. I'm talking about the whole thing.
Yeah, and we've heard from quite a bit of families in 15 who want the option, and I think we need to give that option through grandfathering. I'm specifically talking about, so the downtown area, that's a travel to an already crowded school to Rockvale, so.
I'm sorry, excuse me. So, with 15, we're talking about that, I've heard from some people from 15 that want to go back to Blackman, we heard here tonight, want to stay at Rockvale. Is that, would that be a dual-zone area, or just totally zone Blackman?
So, we would, the recommendation, if I'm understanding, what I would recommend would be a rezoning for rising ninth graders, so next year's ninth graders would go to Blackman. If they're 10th, 11th, or 12th graders that are currently attending Rockvale, they would have the option to stay at Rockvale, one-time exercised option, they can't go back and forth. They would either choose to stay at Rockvale, or they would rezone and grandfather, or rezone to Blackman. So, it wouldn't be a dual-zone, and it would only be applicable to students who have already started in a school. So, if there's somebody who moves into that neighborhood in 10th grade, they don't get to pick between two schools. They go to the zoned, wherever that area is zoned.
I think it is important that we keep them in the high school that they start, because a lot of them have the career paths that they've already started, they've worked on it for years before they even get to high school, so I agree with that.
I agree. I want to keep the kids who are in high school where they're at right now. I just want the opportunity, like I said, to put the.
Add one.
Riverdale zone that was Christiana back together.
What I'm hearing is we want to look at some type of hybrid between option 2H and option 2F, and then that would just omit 2E. We don't even need 2E.
Right.
You just blend them, you just blend.
That'd be two options, right.
There'd be ninth grade with grandfathering, now, understanding that grandfathering means for that year only, for those grades, and transportation had to be provided by the parents.
On option 2F, I don't exactly understand if we're trying not to move very many people, why we are taking students in that area that already go to Blackman High School and moving Am I looking at the right one at 2F?
You're talking about six, seven, eight, and nine?
Uh-huh. I don't understand why we would take students that are already at Blackman High School and move them to Segal High School.
That's the downtown, right?
Yes, downtown. I mean, how many people are we talking about? 50 or 100, or are we talking about 300?
Well, no one in nine, there's only, and this is.
Right, in nine, I've got no students, right?
In eight, it's only one.
In eight, it's only one, so six and seven, six I know needs to come out of Rockvale High, understand that, but.
This.
Seven is what?
This particular map is set up for all students to leave.
Okay.
I would have to go back and refigure.
For the ninth grade.
What it looked like for this same map to just be reflective of ninth grade. For those numbers out here, I probably will make a mistake, and it.
Okay, no, don't do that. Don't do that.
I don't want to do that. I want to give you a correct answer.
But you can get these blended by the time.
Yes, absolutely.
Our next meeting.
Yes. And to only reflect, if I understand right, the board wants a hybrid of these two, but only to reflect a freshman change with grandfathering for the other three grades.
Yes.
But all freshmen must go.
What do you mean, zone 15?
Yeah.
And then, is it possible for us, for that grandfathering, and I know this is an impossible task for you, so forgive me, but is it possible for us to give our parents in these areas that we're talking about, in advance, you know, we're rezoning, when we do the rezoning, we vote on it, a window of time that they get to decide where they're going to go? Is that a Mr. Evans question?
Could you state that one more time, I want to make sure I mention it.
So, like a registration period where those areas, once rezoning is voted on and agreed upon, if we would notify those parents in the impacted areas for rising, so for next year's 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, give them a window of time to make that decision as to where they're going to go?
Yes, we've done that in the past.
Okay.
Where the board has approved a grandfather option, and we've given parents a deadline, and they have to come at the school by about a certain date for registration purposes, and it worked pretty well. It's not flawless, but pretty well.
And if they don't communicate their desire, then they're rezoned?
That's right.
Okay.
And we did this, it was a middle school rezoning, and I remember specifically that a lot of those middle schools, because you're talking about maybe just a few hundred students instead of thousands of students, they actually reached out and said, we need you to respond, and kind of started tallying those, because they needed for planning as well, for everything from staffing to textbooks, they need to know.
Anybody else? Mr. Estes? Let's put you on the spot.
Which one are we? 2E?
2F and 2H are blending.
Just to make sure, 100%.
Yes.
The board wants me to develop a plan from these two, that would be only the freshmen moving, they would be, have to move.
Yes, they're rezoned.
Two ways about it, and we're looking at the southern half of this map in these two plans, so I want to make sure I understand, nothing would move in nine, or 10, 11, or 12.
Right.
Those are out.
They are getting a grandfathering option, so all we want to see from you is ninth graders movement.
That's just about one person.
But, the question, I'm sorry, the question was the areas that are up, that we talked about going to Segal, that are up in the northern part of the county, those would be out.
They're out. So, the only thing we're looking at. Yeah, is 2F and 2H.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
Let's ask another question. You mentioned that at one time we had put a couple of small areas up here that are next to 15.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know how many people we're talking about there.
One second.
Do they go to Blackman Middle School?
So, area 13 would be the furthest one.
I do.
Do they, they do?
Yeah.
Are they zoned Rockvale? I would like to see the areas that go to Blackman Middle School be also added to this, and then.
They already go to Blackman Middle. Are they not?
Yeah, but then they go to Rockvale, right?
No, sir, if they're, if they're on the south side.
Have we changed that?
Franklin Road, but, yeah.
We changed that.
That we're talking about seven freshmen.
Okay, but if they go to Blackman Middle School, I want them to be added to this map and then get their choice.
Yes, ma'am, I'll add them.
Except for rising ninth graders.
We're giving rising ninth graders an option?
No, except for rising ninth graders.
Okay, I see.
Sorry. I said it, but I just must have mumbled it, I'm sorry. Makes sense?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. I know this is not.
25th? Regular meeting. Do you want to bring it back up to 25th? Regular meeting, does that give you enough time?
At our regular meeting?
Yeah, for next week.
Would the board like to look at this and bring it up for the 25th, our next regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay, we'll look at this on the 25th. 27th, excuse me.
27th.
27th is the meeting.
Thursday.
Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns we want to share with Mr. Morgan?
And you, when will you have this sent to the board and posted online?
I can have it forwarded tomorrow, if you want to review it.
Any other questions? Okay, we thank everybody for speaking, our students, we appreciate you. Appreciate you for coming out. If you have any further questions, comments, or concerns, feel free to reach out to us or stick around, we're happy to talk to you. Heating is adjourned.